We will call the January meeting of the Pipestone Energy Schools Order by the Legions for almost 14.
By the Legions, Sue Valley Energy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion approval of his agenda.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Public forum? None. Okay. Presentation, Sue Valley Energy Solar Project Application.
Well, good evening, School Board. Jay Buckles from Sue Valley Energy, and I also brought along Nathan Zimmerman. He's our new manager of beneficial electrification, and wanted to just give you some updates on the solar project that we got installed last year. And if you have a few minutes, I'd like to kind of run through that. One of the talking points from one of our last board meetings that we held was as cooperatives, we like to gang together, group together, and really help with generation, transmission, and distribution. So we are the distribution providers for this area, and then our power provider, LNO, Power Cooperative, they are our transmission side of things. And then we also have Basin Electric out of Bismarck, North Dakota, that does a lot of the generation. We all have kind of our different roles to get electricity from the generator to your individual homes or businesses. So Deb, can you? Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. So have some good news. After a lot of starts and stops in 2024, the system was successfully commissioned and energized on December 18th of 2024. And then as of today, Nathan was able to pull some information on the kilowatt hours used. So that's the Bimont electricity over an hour's time over that month, and so we had just around 1,400 kilowatts hours have been produced. Is that a lot? Eh, it depends on what your definition of a lot is. And so at my home, we're probably using about 2,000, 3,000 kilowatt hours in a month. So if I was talking about maybe a larger scale solar project, you might be thinking about maybe megawatts. But because this is a 20 KW solar installation, your power output's going to be a lot less too. And so kind of just a historical outlook, I was talking to Dr. Willard and Deb for some of this history and the look back. So we originally signed the MOU with the previous superintendent back in February of 2023. And then after Dr. Willard got on board, we were able to meet with him and Nathan's predecessor in October of 2023. And then because of some of the educational aspects, there was an interconnection that was still established. We didn't necessarily want to lose that. There was a bigger cooperative benefit to all of our members to keep that interconnection intact. And so LNO, our transmission power provider, created a grant specifically for schools, and that was in early of 2024. After going through a lot of that work, we did learn through the Pipestone paper actually, that there was an ordinance that was passed, which really created a moratorium on solar within the city of Pipestone. And the reason was, they were not against solar, but with some of the incentives and some of the grants that were out there, they just wanted to get a process in place to allow more solar within the city, so it wasn't kind of the Wild West. So that took some time over the summer of 2024. We were in communication with Dr. Willard and Deb and the city clerk, if I remember right. And so through that entire process, we didn't put some of our work on hold. We did go through another updated MOU, a grant application, and then we did have to fast track through a regional transmission provider, SPP, the Southwest Power Pool. Again, it's just all these different steps that we wanted to take so we could get the solar project energized before the end of the year. And then toward early, I think it was actually in October, the city was able to pass their ordinance, which really lifted the moratorium on solar at that time. And so because of all the work that we were doing behind the scenes, Nathan and our contractor, Midwest Solar, we got a permit through the city, and then we were able to get the solar installation started in early, actually probably maybe closer to Thanksgiving, November 2024. And then, oh, one more, last one, Deb.
Sorry.
That's okay. And then, yeah, started construction late 2024. So after all that work, we were able to get it energized, and kind of the date that we really wanted to make sure that the interconnection stayed in place, it had to be working, operational before the end of 2024. Go ahead. And so just kind of the project overview, and again, thank you to the School Board for approving that. I know it was a lot of work on our end too. Estimated lifetime total cost of the project, even though it's a 20 KW watt system, still a significant cost. This isn't just materials to build it or install it, it's the ongoing maintenance, the operation, energy production back to the school, and the future decommissioning. One of the things that the Board was really hesitant or had some concerns about from the previous renewable energy project was, what are you going to do with the project once it's done? And so after talking with Dr. Willard and the School Board, definitely did not want to have the school incur any costs, whether it was installing, operating, or decommissioning the project. And so that 260,000 does cover all that. That makes it to that third bullet point, the school district not bearing any of the costs. And I do have one correction that I did get from your finance office too. We'll mention that here in a second. The school system would be reimbursed for the energy production, and that really kind of follows our large power rate. That's how we base some of the production costs or the money coming back to you. And based on what we're kind of seeing with projections, and we'll see a chart here in the next slide, is it does seasonally average about $100 per month. Is that a lot? Eh, it's something. Again, it really helps all of our cooperatives to really help keep downward pressure on rates. And then, and then we did reach out to Dr. Willard late last year if there was any educational assistance. So if there was a science class that wanted to learn more about renewable energy, we're more than willing to be open to have Nathan or one of our other electricians come out and kind of describe the process and what the future might look for solar in this area. I have not heard yet.
Yes.
And maybe they didn't reach out to me specifically. But they are more than willing to. Some of the overviews, and sorry for the size of this graph, but this is some of the estimates, and right now, just visiting with a couple other people, January is not a prime time for solar production, mainly because of the angle at which the sun is, and because this is a static solar array, it sits at one angle the whole day, so you're going to see the least amount of production during the winter months. Obviously, in the middle part of that graph, you're talking May, June, July, August. Cloudy days do affect it, snow affects it, but you're just going to have more sun, longer days with sunshine. And so so far, January forecast production, we're actually a little bit over what we forecasted with that 1,400 kilowatt hours. We did have one day, and it was probably one of those cloudy, short days, 11 kilowatt hours, almost 12 kilowatt hours were produced. But on the flip side, on a high day, we're closer to 100 kilowatt hours. And this is kind of some of the information that we would envision maybe a classroom would want to visit more about. So looking at that last one was, in 2025, we're estimating right around 31,000 kilowatt hours, and that's going to adjust over time too. And typically with solar, what we've been seeing, we installed a couple of different solar arrays at our facilities in both Coleman and Brandon, and we're estimating, you know, 15 to 20-year lifespan of these solar panels for them to produce what they need to. So the one caveat that we did notice, because this is a special rate or an educational grant that we received from LNO, a little bit of fine tuning on our side on the billing, the school did receive an invoice for the fixed facility costs that we did need to install. But because everything is very standardized at the co-op, it was just taking the information as a residential or general service account would have, and it did generate that. So I've talked to our billing already coming into this meeting, and they're going to credit that back to you on the next bill. So just stay in touch with me if something like that happens. Again, we wanted to make sure that we're catching these little things, because again, it's a little bit new to us too, and there's a lot of reporting. We have to talk to a couple other entities, WAPA being another part, just to make sure that the interconnection stays viable. So if you have any questions, Nathan and I can stand by for, to answer any questions or updates.
It would be really important for the school to have a better understanding of what's available for solar energy, how to clear those different things too. I mean, you're, we saw, that's why I thought, I.
Whether it be a science class, maybe it's a financial class, we learned a lot with working with the city and all those different dynamics to make something like this come to fruition. Otherwise, I thank you to the School Board and staff for helping us through that process. So thank you, Dr. Willard.
Thank you. Moving on to the consented agenda, 6.1, approval of minutes for regular school board meeting on December 16. 6.2, approved minutes at the school board organizational meeting of January 6, and personal report, action required. Do you have any questions or anything that you want pulled out? Hearing none. Have a motion to approve the consented agenda.
So move.
Second. Then a move and seconded to approve the consented agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion passes. Moving on to financials, overview of the budget year-to-date, Jackie.
What are you doing over there, Jackie? Sleeping or what?
Yeah.
She's all like scared.
I think they currently have 40,000, so I have to, I'm currently, I'm, I'm, I'm here.
Any other questions for Jackie regarding the budget?
Kind of looking through here, I see there's some non-instructional computer software. The, or, that's, 405, 405.
Other managers, obviously, 405 would be in place when the revenue is added. Because, 40, well, we're expecting, doesn't it, the lady, she told me, she, if I did that, budget a half, that revenue won't be in. Obviously. Very specific. You have to run the trial last two, you don't have.
Any more questions for Jackie?
Yes, I see that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 7.2, approved treasures report for December 31st, 2024.
Okay, our first half, I was like, December 31st, that I am, last, 25,000.
Questions for Jackie? Deb, a motion to approve the treasure report for December? So move and seconded to approve the treasure report for December 31st, 2024. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both close. Motion passes. 7.3, approved 2023 A bond treasures report for December 31st, 2024.
We have a motion to approve. We just continue to see that without the insurance.
Do we have a motion to approve? So who's? A motion and approve to, or seconded to approve the 2023 A bonds treasure report for December 31st, 2024. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. 7.4, approve the regular bills for January. Anybody have any questions?
I did reach out to Jackie earlier, just, again, a lot of this stuff is still new to me, and I did tell her that I want to sit down with her sometime and just kind of find out what's included in each thing and whatever. Anyway, I just kind of asked her about one of the bills, and she clarified that, and so, yeah.
So earlier, she clarified. Got ready? Got ready? A motion to approve the regular bills for January. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those opposed, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Approved high school activity bills for January. Any questions? To approve? A motion and seconded to approve the high school activity bills for January. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. More important information. Jackie, and Brad, any, and, 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 and,[1654.12]
Just an update on the goals that I have set aside. So our academic goal, really we'll know the whole part of that when we come when spring comes, but we've got our winter testing and I'm seeing a lot of growth with our kids. So that's exciting. I can't wait to report out to you by time, I'm guessing, June comes for that meeting. Our non-academic, so our attendance is, needs a lot of work, and you can clearly see that. When you look at our students, I got a lot of just different data there. When you look at overall attendance, it's 94.9%, but that's saying that every student has missed an average of four days. Well, that's not because we have quite a few students that have missed a lot of it. So my social worker, she's been in charge of attendance and she has created the coolest spreadsheet that we can look and see where a lot of students are at. So with the data, this does, I do have some students with extra needs, so some of their days that are here, they are missing a lot more due to some personal reasons. So when you look at this, you're, I want you to just be aware of that we have some students that have extra needs and they're out of school for longer periods of time with that. But I think we're on the right track. I do feel like it is an area focused for us, because attendance obviously equates to academics and everything like that, something that we're really working for. We had our second quarter error wave parade, two students in a great grade gets to be celebrated when we look at our safe, being safe and secure, respectful and responsible. And then this coming Friday, we have our third terrific kit program. Questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, moving on to Mrs. Ortman.
Okay. This time last year, I guess I didn't even work here in Pipestone, so I certainly wouldn't, would not have been working on the schedule. However, I am starting to work on the schedule and I'm really excited about that. I did survey my staff to find out exactly how they felt about the seven period day, going back to that. And overwhelmingly, everyone is in favor of the seven period day. I'm finding that I just need to move some classes around and maybe add some additional offerings for those high school students that don't have a lot of options for electives. As far as school update, or excuse me, the school goals updates go, I had a non-academic goal, which was tardies. I'm excited to tell you that we had over 2,000 tardies first quarter, and then our number did decrease to 1,593 tardies, which is still a lot, but we've really been focusing on that and really stressing the importance of coming to class on time. So I'm hoping that that number goes down for third quarter as well. As far as grades, we have, I have an academic goal as well. We are trying to reduce the number of failing grades. At the end of first quarter, 65 middle and high school students had at least one failing grade. Unfortunately, I have to report to you that that number has actually gone up for second quarter by 10. It's now at 75. And that includes interventions such as teachers taking time after school to make appointments with students, contacting families, having them come in before school to get extra help. I have met with each of those students that were borderline in my office and we had a check and connect. I offered to help, and unfortunately, that number did go up. So I'm going to be speaking with my leadership team and try to figure out what else we can try. We'll pivot there a little bit and try something different. In high school, if you fail a semester, excuse me, if you fail a quarter, you could potentially fail a semester, or you may not, depending on what your actual score was. But in high school, if you fail a semester, you have to retake the class, or you have to take a credit recovery during summer school. And I've spoken to some students and I'm not really certain what it is, but there is not a huge sense of concern, which is really unfortunate. Students have said, it's not a big deal, I can come in the summer. There's not that sort of drive to get your credits while you're here at school, so I'm...
Are parents involved in like the sit-down booth?
I don't involve the parents in the sit-down, I usually call them.
Oh.
And they're, I would say, the majority of them are completely aware. And a lot of times, they can't get their children to school. So it's just, it's a battle that I'm continuing to fight, but I will absolutely do that. We have a need on this side of the building for furniture. And I wish we had enough money to buy it all at one time, but if you look in our pod area, they're, it's pretty blah. The classrooms are, the teachers are complaining of their chairs being broken and then taped. And the students are wearing, if they were in shorts, they, their leg will get pinched, like every single class. If you have a child in high school, they will complain about it if you ask them. And so I spoke with Dr. Willert, and moving forward, we would like to do furniture purchasing, you know, as the budget allows, of course, in phases where, you know, perhaps this department would receive some new furniture and we want it to be more flexible, where you're not just purchasing new desks that can be put in rows. It's more collaborative, where, you know, you have some areas that are maybe tables where students can sit together and work, or maybe we'll have some tables that can be raised and lowered. So if students want to stand instead of sit, they're able to do that. I don't know how much we'll be able to order right away, but we do have a plan and there's a definite need. It's almost every day that a teacher lets me know that there's another broken chair we need to fix. Actually, Dr. Willert and I both have been victim to the chairs where we sat down observing a class and the chair broke.
It's a humbling experience. It was a humbling experience.
It's happened to us both. Your children, if you have a student in middle or high school, may have told you about the recent assembly that we had with Corey Greenwood. He was incredible. He's a motivational speaker. He really spoke to the kids. I've never seen all seven through 12 students fully engaged with a speaker, ever, in my life. He was incredible and that message was, you matter. And he really got very deep and personal with the students. And lots of students stayed and were teary eyed after the program and wanted to speak to him in person. We have a few new staff hires on my side of the building. Jennifer Yost is my new attendance secretary, taking the place of Lori Gels. She's doing an incredible job and brings a lot of positive energy to my office. The second one would be Larissa Pemberton, who was hired as a special ed teacher, and her first official day is tomorrow. And she's currently, she has a bachelor's degree, not in education, but her, she's actually working on her master's degree right now. And she switched it from social studies ed to special ed now. And she's going through the pipeline, so she's going to be an amazing addition as well. She's very, very intelligent and has a great work ethic. I will be attending the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals Conference later this week. Dr. Willert recommended that I do that and network and meet some other principals and come back with some ideas. So I will be gone this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I will be reporting back to you at the next school. The other additional part of my presentation was, I added...
Cool. One moment. My apologies.
Yes, I do, thank you. Okay, so we use a program in the sixth grade called Reading Plus. Actually, sixth grade, all of sixth grade uses it, and all of my special ed staff uses it. It's a personalized program, which is online. So let's say we're all, all of us are in 10th grade. That does not mean that we all read at a 10th grade level. Like maybe one of us will, but the rest of us are either going to be below that, far below that, above that, or far above that. So this is just a sampling of the data that I took at the benchmark.
There's the second page to this. My apologies. Oh, scroll down.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a quadrant. So those are, those are 35 different students that are in sixth grade. They were tested at baseline. So the top left is lower comprehension and vocab and higher fluency, which means they can read really fast, they can read what's in front of them, but they are not able to understand it very well, and they don't have a great vocabulary. If you look at the quadrant on the right, that is higher comprehension, vocab, and higher fluency. Those are students that read really fast and well and clearly, and they also understand what they read. You see three students are in that quadrant, three out of 35. If you look at the bottom left, that is lower comprehension and lower fluency. That's students that really struggle to read. They have a hard time understanding what they read, and they also have a hard time reading at a rate that makes sense. So they're slow readers and they don't understand stuff. The bottom right is, they have a great vocabulary, they have, they understand exactly what they read, but they, they read slowly. So, and the reason that I'm presenting this instead of our curriculum director is because I'm very, I have a lot of experience with this program. I've been using it for about eight years and I've seen a lot of great things happening with it. It is, the actual program design, personalized, if you can see where all of the blue dots are, every one of those students needs to read much. They don't need the same thing. So giving that in the textbook, that is the same as every other 30, 30 students in the classroom, it does not work. So the program designs exactly what they need. Students that read really well and read fast are not even going to get the assignments where they have to focus on trying to get better at reading quickly if they're in the highs. They only get what they need to. And we are right now doing, using it for 25 minutes, three times a week, in sixth grade class. I'd like to expand that because this does not go away. We've seen growth already at an average of point eight grade levels, which is like almost an entire year, as an average for the whole group of students that are using it, including the students that are IEPs. I would like to expand it in more to the middle school and kind of bridge that gap a little bit this year, not just for sixth grade, because they're not, clearly not ready for a one-size-fall-out at this stage. So that is all I have for you, unless you have questions or comments for me.
Good year. What did you hear?
When I used this in a previous visit, we were in year four, we, on, I'm going to use the MCA as a reference, but back then, it was the SBA. I taught in South Dakota, I was a principal of South Dakota, the Smarter Balance of the Classroom. And we were not doing well. We had 28% of our population in grades three through eight that were being tested were proficient in reading. By the time, we became a ribbon school after four years of very, like using this with fidelity, we were at 73% in grades three through eight of proficiency in reading. So it's something that I believe in because it isn't just, you know, it's personalized for you. And students actually get some choice as well. They get to choose the topics that they want to read about. They, they can kind of get to scroll through all of the topics. And so some students, they only read about polar bears. Some of them only read about football. And that's fine, as long as they're reading and they're getting better. So I'm excited about the program right now. It's just being used by a small sampling of students, but I would like to expand it more into the middle school as well. And students that actually read really well, it can be used as sort of a gifted enhancement. You're still learning. Student, I have students right now that are in sixth grade that read at an 11th grade level, and they're still using the program at their level and are able to use that as... What's the word I'm looking for, Dr. Willert? Not enhancement, but enrichment. Thank you, enrichment, yes. Yes, it's a great program. So I just wanted to share about it, so you kind of knew what we're doing in the middle school. Yes?
Moving on to Mrs. Danay Boarder Part.
Hi. So, excuse me, so we have a new mentoring program this year. In the past, we've had instructional coaches, but those staff members we needed in the classroom, and so we had to go with a different approach. And so we have met in the elementary with mentors and the mentees, and they are really appreciating having someone at their grade level, level, or their job alike, level to be able to collaborate with. And some of the mentors had instructional coaches as mentees, and they, they feel like having a mentoring program has been better for them to be able to help the people that they're mentoring. Mrs. Morvitz talked a little bit about DIBELS and NWEA. We're done with that in the elementary, just about halfway through in the middle school, high school. And then today, access testing opened up for ML students. I know that elementary started that today, and middle school, high school will be, will be doing that soon. And then after access testing, we'll roll into MCA testing. So we call this testing season, I guess. And then for the red act requirements, phase one, I've registered the middle school, high school, special ed, and ML teachers, so they'll either start this summer or this fall with their red act requirements. And I was on a Zoom meeting today, and phase two, they have pushed back again. So, and phase two is middle school and high school ELA teachers. So we'll see what that changes to. They didn't give us any specific dates, but we'll keep getting people registered as we need to. And then with the language arts curriculum, just another update there, we've actually narrowed down to two companies. And the two companies that we're looking at are grades K through 12, so that we have some continuity throughout all of the grade levels. That's all I have.
Just a question, all these tests, I do, are these municipal tests that are required, or some of these are the Romanian tests, or what?
So the MCA tests are state, the state requirement. And then we also have the DIBELS and the NWEA, and those are benchmark assessments, so that we get a picture of where our students are at in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. And we make programming decisions based on that. We collect data for students that maybe need some title assistance, and so it helps us to hone in on some students that might need some extra support with the district that our tests are. Yes, and DIBELS is for the red act.
Go ahead. For the MAP testing, the NWEA, so we take that and that is a, we use that data to inform our instruction. So let's say I'm teaching 11th grade English and I find a pattern that students are not able, my, my data shows that summarizing text is low. So I'm going to really like amp up my instruction in that area. And so we do have time allotted for the teachers, for professional development to go through that. Mrs. Pease and I go through that with them because I have a bit of experience with MAP. And then we, we decide what needs to be done in the classroom. So it does seem like a lot of testing, and we don't like it either. We had a conversation about that last week. We want to try to cut it down, but we need this information. We want to know how our students have grown from fall to now in our areas, and if we see that they haven't, we need to do something different. We, we have to keep ourselves accountable as well. And we have talked about, Mrs. Pease and I have talked about not giving the MAP test at the end of the year and just having a benchmark and then a mid-year to kind of move forth, because it isn't always, people aren't typically in the mindset of looking at data about students that we aren't going to have in the fall, right at the end of the year. So, and they are lengthy, but they're very, very specific. And I know when I was a classroom teacher, I poured over the data and was able to determine that, you know, we have a lesson on context clues, and 98% of my students actually already have mastered that. So how about I just pull the one student aside before or after school and teach that? I don't need to spend two or three days working on context clues. So it's just more to inform the instructor, essentially, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Moving on to number 10, unfinished businesses and... Moving on toward action, evolution accepting donation. We have donations. Oh, I got it, I'm good. Okay, so I have anonymous donation, $1,000, donated to the overdue match accounts. Arrow Booster Club donated $1,258 in funds. That was the donation to the gym, Humble Track, and donation to use basketball programming software. President Luther gave $100 to the wellness room. Give My Jill Memorial Foundation, $5,773, and that is towards the Good Rapids store. Give My Jill Memorial Foundation, $5,771, and that went to donation for uneven bars and curails. And then Riley moved the $1,000 value of donation in order for the smaller class. We thank all these people for giving towards the schools, all these things that the community gives towards our students. We have a question.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Approve obsolete items as surplus.
Board members, you'll see the attached pictures of the items. This is practice that we worked to include, not just the list of the item, but the photos of the items as well. You can see that there are a number of things that go back to COVID time, and a couple of things that go back to the old school. And again, just some things that have outlived their use. So again, we have listed these as items to dispose of and who wants to give them advertising for it.
Any questions? All the members, aye? Aye, those close? Motion passes. Other point three, approve contract with true code.
All right, so this is quite a lengthy document, and I will share that this has been vetted by our legal counsel. I'm sure that we do that when entering into a contract like this. There were two recommendations of thoughts that legal counsel had for us and that have been addressed, those that are part of the facilities committee at the time of the targeted session. One was about the damage caused in their... One was liquidated damage, there were liquidated damages, so we had that covered. And then another observation was making certain that we have enough insurance. And part of the requirement was for us as owners to have the builder's risk insurance. We're working with our insurance provider, we received a couple. We haven't had a chance to vet those yet. That is part of the agreement, that it's the owner's responsibility to take on the builder's risk. I had posed a question to the contractor and to Tremco about that. And they said, "Well, it probably forces us to rebid the whole process again because the parameters set out in the bid documents was that the owner would take the builder's risk liability." So, so at the end of the day, we're recommending that we move forward with this agreement. This would initiate the project in June of this year, June of '25. It's a two-phase project, so it would be concluded essentially by the start of school this year, then this next year, and then start again following June. We have the cash to cover the costs for the phase one of this project. And phase two, we have a few different levers that we can pull. One of those that has been discussed is powering against our long-term facility maintenance funding that we receive. And the reason that we tapped the pause button a little bit on that is because there is some speculation that in this legislative session, roofs may be included in that. So that would be a benefit to us. Now, if we, if we are leveraging our long-term facility maintenance funds to do this project, the benefits to the local taxpayer is that we do get the egg school credit for that. So that's, that's the upside of leveraging our funds that way. So, long story short, this has been a while in the making and it has been thoroughly vetted and accordingly, would make the recommendation that we move forward and approve the agreement.
Any questions regarding the contract with Tremco? The motion to approve the contract with Tremco.
So move.
Second. It's been approved and seconded to approve the contract with Tremco. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those post. Motion passes. 11.4, approve contract with Knowledge Works.
So Knowledge Works is, is, this is part of the grant funding that we received, a grant of $422,000 on closing the educational opportunity grant for students. And you've heard that referenced a couple of times already. This partnership is, we, we, the administrative team actually vetted a few different partners. We talked to Marzano's team. Marzano, Robert Marzano is the big guru, if you will, in educational research. We talked to another organization. That one is called World Savvy. They're based out of the Twin Cities. A little different approach. And then Knowledge Works, and Knowledge Works is a little more in line with the discussions that we've had about the profile of a graduate and how we need to do our strategic plan accordingly. So we went through this with them. And you can see that it's very heavy in training and support for staff, not just for administrators, but for teachers as well. Some coaching that's part of it. There's some resources that will also be included for our teams to access once we move forward with our profile of a graduate. How we go about implementing that then is really the key. So operationalizing that profile and those competencies and those skills will be essential. So again, it's a, it's an agreement that we've had reviewed and it's covering everything that I think we need to cover in terms of our direction as we work on closing the educational opportunity gap. And I think an important piece of this goes back to what Mrs. Ortman shared earlier, that student engagement piece. Because there's a reason kids aren't excited to be at school when it comes back to some engagement. And the idea is through the partnership with Knowledge Works and some of the conversations that we've already had with them, that's one of their primary focus areas, is student and learner, learner engagement. And a lot of that comes into the things that I've heard a few of you talk about, which is making learning relevant, making it in context and exciting and fun. I would guess that any of the absences that you've talked about, Mrs. Ortman, haven't come or tardies haven't come from students, for example, that are in our CGL program. Students are very engaged in that program. It's meaningful, it has context for them, and it surrounds a set of goals that they have for their, for themselves. And I think if we can find ways to operationalize that in our broader curriculum, the more it's going to benefit our kids and our district as a whole. So anyhow, that's what, that's what this partnership is about. And like I said, the cost is completely covered with the grant.
This was a big, you know, something that MSBA went to a session about it too. And it's, there's a lot of talk about how, like what the profile, what you want your graduate to look like. It's not necessarily just a passing grade or a, I mean, it's how, what you want these kids to be able to do once they get out of high school. What they can find for themselves, where they need to be once they're out of high school. You know, whether it be college or jobs or, you know, whatever that is. And just taking the time, even on a yearly basis, for someone to sit down with these students and figure out where they're, where they're going or what they want and what they're interested in. So I think it'll be really good for us to really get to work on this for sure.
If I, students get more focus. Great. And if I read the contract right now, that I read all of the seven pages of this one. No, I think I maybe got to 10 on a level like this. That's what we pay the lawyers for. Anyway, it looked like it was like getting it right, right?
Be careful, they obviously have a timeline on how things are going.
Yeah, we have a complete timeline and how it'll flow. And you have individuals who are teenagers, they have a team, they start the profile. They show students, we accept them, we start that work. Because we want to engage community members, former graduates, current students, parents, faculty, staff, obviously, and because, yeah, everyone's supposed to report. Because we all have best wishes.
Any other questions? Welcome on. Three, nine, ten, contract.